Open.
Okay.
I support.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes.
Paul Janderski is absent, Christine Newman.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Edgar Teedoff is absent, Kathy Harris.
We'll see if anybody's outside.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Ross or Nesbit.
Yes.
Anybody out here, we're opening back up.
There you go.
Okay.
Now they can't say we didn't warn them.
Anybody make?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
No.
Wait, nope.
No, no.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation from.
Okay, got me.
Support.
Would you like a roll call on that?
With protest. Can I say that?
No, but do we have to?
Do we need a roll call on that?
Yes, because it involves money.
Yep.
True.
Okay, Paul Janderski is absent, Christine Newman.
Yes.
Michael Nesbit.
Yes.
Edgar Teedoff is absent, Kathy Harris.
Yes.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Ross or Nesbit.
Yes. Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Alright. Sweetie North. Yeah. I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we get a roll call?
Paul Janderski is absent, Christine Newman.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Edgar Teedoff is absent, Kathy Harris.
Present.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Ross or Nesbit.
Here.
Okay, we have any approval or adjustments to the agenda? Any adjustments?
No adjustments.
No adjustments? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
No, it was a rule.
Can I get a support?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passed. Announcement, public comment. Anybody want to talk?
I have an update from the county if you want it now or someplace down further than the agenda. But.
I guess that's me. I have this evening an informational read for about six minutes. And it's about Waterways Trails. And it's about On River Park. And it's about state historical marker. My name is Dale Greve, I'm seventy-eight years old. I'm worked in Saint Charles and I've lived here all nine years of my life. And Greaves have lived in Saint Charles for one hundred and twenty-seven years. I'm speaking to you this evening about the possibilities of Waterways Trails, a beautiful On River Park, and a state historical marker in Sid Park here in Saint Charles. This is the local citizens' informational input, pointing out possible future public upgrades within the village of Saint Charles. After the read, I have copies of my report and a map to be distributed to the council members, expanding my informational read. I'm here this evening to discuss briefly the possibilities of an On River Park, state historical marker, and Waterways Trails, beginning and ending in Saint Charles. I repeat, I'm here this evening to discuss briefly the possibilities of an On River Park, state historical marker, and Waterways Trails, beginning and ending in Saint Charles. Based on fact, I have traveled well over ten thousand miles on Saginaw Valley river system by motorboat and canoe, mostly between Saint Charles and Saginaw, off and on, off and on for over fifty years. I have studied the history of Saint Charles for over forty years, including the bad and Shewassee Rivers Road, Saint Charles to Saginaw. The overview, four points. Point one, On River Park, relaxation, fishing, exercise, a beautiful place along the river, and upriver destination. Point two, state historical marker. This area where the On River Park is now located is very historic in regards to the beginning of Saint Charles, both township and village. Point three, Waterways Trails between Saint Charles and Saginaw. The Shewassee Flats, seventy-five miles of motorboat, motorboatable waterways and a normal level of water. One hundred and fifty miles round trip. Distances are even farther for canoe and kayak. The Waterways Trails begin and end in downtown Saint Charles, both the old business district and north Saint Charles. I repeat the, the Waterways Trails begin and end in downtown Saint Charles, both the old business district and north Saint Charles. Point four, the bad Shewassee Rivers Road is a navigatable waterway of the United States of America. Congress has the final say as to how this waterway is used through the Seragut, the Army Corps of Engineers. I have prepared an informational folder slash handout to be distributed to local branches of government. The folder slash handout explains in more depth and detail the information I'm providing today. In closing my informational read, I want to stress the local importance of the reunification of Saint Charles and the local waterways between Saint Charles and Saginaw. Thank you for your time and patience in this informational read. Dale Greve. I will pass out the reports each one from each. The map is promised.
We can just pass them down Dale if it's easier. I can put one in his thing so it's here. I still need another one. I'm putting them in the people that aren't here.
Yep.
There's, there's seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have any questions?
Thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Dale?
Dale.
Is your contact information in here?
I'm sure.
Is your contact information in here?
Yes.
Yeah, somewhere.
It's right in front of me in the corner.
One point here on the inside color is my original version. But I think that's going to take way too long.
Oh, okay.
But I put in.
Okay, thank you.
No.
And I also have.
So he's, he's saying start here and end here.
Right here with me.
Okay.
Want to see this out first? The map of basically history between Saint Charles and Saginaw. I have top of the city manager prior. I've offered if you'd like a copy of this map, just to go to.
And Dale, are you talking about like going all along that river and making some sort of a park? No? So not like behind your house and?
Just to use it as a waterway.
Oh, I know, but you mentioned in here about a park and I've seen a lot of people on the side of the river having picnics and stuff and I was just curious what?
Yeah, well, then. A little park around here.
You think that's?
Had that for over thirty years.
Yeah. Yeah.
And made here a screen.
Okay.
And expand on.
So you're talking about like just starting here, going all through here and coming back to Saint Charles? In one day?
And everywhere in between.
Okay, and any place you want to go? You don't think people get lost out here? Would it be, you have signage?
The county was long.
Okay, you end up, okay?
They'll all wrap back around to some point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, just a couple of updates from the county. The village updates are starting to come in for the renewals. So next year, the Castle Museum, twenty twenty-six is going to be putting it on the ballot. So if you guys are for the Castle Museum, start campaigning, and if you're not for the Castle Museum, start campaigning. Also, the Dow Event Center is up for renewal in two thousand and thirty. Those are the only two that came to us so far and they're really starting their campaign going on, so they're going to start pushing them, so you're going to be hearing a lot more of that. As we get updates from the county, I'll share them to you guys. And also, the memorial couple of numbers are starting to come back in finally. They estimated that we were going to make anywhere from twenty-five to thirty million dollars on that. Who's going to bring it total? Anyways, it's over and above, they're up to forty million dollars now. So they did really well on that. So I'm still trying to get the numbers, the breakdown, how much stayed in Saginaw County versus how much went back to Canada on their hockey league, since it is a Canadian hockey league, so. Uh, there again, I'll be working on that too, so. Other than that, that's all I have unless you guys have something for me. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Place your engineering report.
Good evening, council. Austin Alexander Spicy here. Pretty slow month, so not really a ton of updates here. We'll jump through the ones that we got, actually no updates, so like category B, uh, grant application for that local match, the road work. Eagle's website still says announcement will be made by mid-September, uh, it's probably October. Seen anything there, so. There are also, all the other grant programs that we've been waiting to hear back on from them have also been all delayed post-state timeline, so. I don't know if it's probably caught up in funding and all this, you know, budget shutdowns, potential shutdowns, all that fun stuff. Basically, that's kind of going to be the running theme of this month, is a lot of stuff delayed. And I'm guessing a lot of it is impacted by the, all the budget shutdowns and potential shutdowns, so. So yeah, no updates on the category B, um, no updates on phase two water main improvements. That being funded through the US Department of Agriculture, definitely getting hit by all the shutdowns. So we haven't heard anything there, still waiting for a response. Nothing yet, you know, nothing under threat on either of those as far as not, you know, things being shut down or potentially not going or not being funded, it's just, it's just delays. Waiting for state and federal governments to, to get around to it. On the TMF side of things, they did post their new criteria for SRF project planning, which is State Revolving Fund. So essentially as part of the TMF grant work that we've been doing this past year to locate lead galvanized water service lines, part of that funding includes us applying for more money to then go in and replace all those nasty lead lines that we found. So they just published every three years, they're allowed to update their criteria that says who gets funding and who doesn't. They just posted that, uh, next week they'll have a public hearing that says, hey, does anybody have any comments? I'll be looking into that criteria with kind of a fine-tooth comb and seeing specifically certain things that are relevant for Saint Charles and and our eligibility here to make sure we bring that up and voice those concerns and just ask general clarified questions. So the big thing there is part ninety to submit that intent to apply by November first, which just says, yes, next year we will be submitting a project plan, and again, us submitting that plan is all covered by the TMF grant funding, so. Nothing out of Saint Charles' pocket there. But just we got to figure out the new rules and everything and the new criteria, how we can best be competitive. And then TMF side of things for the actual work, we've still got a little bit of restoration to finish up. And then going to be using those leverage, leveraging those grant dollars to find a few more services that couldn't find. Jason and I will try and go in through the house side of things, we've done everything on the exterior that we can, so maybe some more.
Work her way out.
Yeah, let's try and find them, you know, throw some, some man hours at it, see what we can get. Uh, on the phase one water main improvements project from earlier this year slash last year, we're going to squeeze the last little bit of juice out of the orange with our contingency fund there. And we are going to replace the four lead lines that we found on the TMF grant so that the village of Saint Charles will be completely lead-free, um, everyone can kind of sleep, sleep well at night in that regard. We'll still have those seventy-plus galvanized water services that, since we cannot prove they were never previously connected to like a lead fitting or a lead component, those all still need to get replaced, but in my opinion, they're much, much, much less of a risk versus obviously the legitimate lead service line, so. We got to get all those removed and then again, we'll have that TMF application to remove the galvanized. Last two more code of ordinance updates, so October or November meeting there with the planning commission will finalize our review, the last section that we're working on is the cross connection ordinances. Just getting some of the language there, so Mark's in contact with the planning commission, he sends his regards. And then the safe routes is the one that we've actually had the most updates on, so we're doing stuff, we're doing coordinate corridor modeling, sidewalk profiling, uh, all the other stuff that our transportation group, you know, gave me all the details on, basically moving along, moving along on, on schedule there. Um, and the archaeological survey is underway, so we'll see if anything comes back in terms of bones and artifacts, and then if they do, then oh god. Otherwise, title research and Eagle permit application are both in progress.
Okay.
Any questions?
Didn't realize there was so much to this saving us to school thing.
Yeah, yeah, because they're, right now they're doing a lot of work with like the sidewalk profiling, I didn't even really think about this until they explained it to me, but it makes sense, they're trying to, they're looking at the existing grade and they're not just going to say necessarily, let's just do sidewalk in the existing grade, because you don't want to, if the road is up in a hill or something, maybe there's a way to level it out a little bit and make sure you're putting the sidewalk in a way so you're not going to end up with like a pooling spot for water and snow. All those like little details that our transportation guys spend a lot of time looking at. Also trying to look at modeling the corridor and like the foot traffic there to see what we can kind of squeeze out, to reduce our wetland impact, just in terms of making permit, permit life a lot easier.
The archaeological study, where, are they just doing it where the sidewalk's going to go?
Yeah.
Have they wandered off to where the dump used to be or anything like that, or?
Would they have the dump that far?
I thought, doesn't it come up here?
Where did the dump used to be?
Right over there, there's a house on it now.
There's a house on it now, yeah.
Well, there's a house on part of it.
Right across from Rock Apartments or?
No, further down, it was on the next corner when you went around to the right. The sidewalk's not going that far, right?
No.
When you go out Spruce Street.
Yep.
And it turns into Ithaca Road, that's where the dump was, right there.
Yeah, we're not going that far.
You're not going up to the cemetery?
Right, you, are you familiar with the?
We're going, we're going past that.
Okay, past the cemetery.
Up past the cemetery and around that corner?
And then crossing over.
Crossing over to where?
We're on the, we're on the other side of the cemetery, we can't go on the cemetery side. So we're on the opposite of the cemetery side, the dump side.
Okay, but then you're getting away from the river and coming back up towards Glens?
We're crossing over at the par, or at the apartments.
You're crossing over at the apartments, and is that where it stops?
It goes right to the school.
Yeah, Sneak City.
Oh, it's going in the back way?
Back side of the school.
Okay, you'll be okay.
Yeah.
Love to see what they found when they dug there, but that's okay.
Thanks, though.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, council minutes approval.
I make a motion, we accept the council minutes as designed.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Commission and committee reports, planning commission, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion, we accept and file the planning commission minutes.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Parks and Recreation Committee, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting minutes for September seventeenth.
I'll, I'll support it, but, um, it's just accept and file.
Oh, except.
They approved them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Downtown Development Authority, October third, twenty twenty-five.
Are these the colors we're supposed to be looking here? Of the fountain? Really can't see it, can you? Is there a colored one somewhere? Oh!
Oh, these are okay.
Oh yeah, these are different. Do they have a preference color?
On the sheet, I believe they've kind of marked one, two, three, four.
Oh, one, two, three, and four. Okay. I see they're into dark. Okay, just curious. They're not asking us for an opinion, are they?
Not, just, uh, later today, yes, they'd like, they'd like colors so they can order it and move forward.
Oh, they're asking us for our opinion?
They want to move forward in conjunction with you, rather than have council complain for the next twenty years that you never got a save.
I'll give you one with the numbers, so you can see it.
Take the one with the numbers. They're giving us a real big selection.
These are just the ones that they picked out, that they like.
I'm assuming we're supposed to pick one of those. Don't you think?
Pick one of the four, or can we pick a different one?
You can pick a different one. I mean, it's not your money.
True.
And really get a fight going, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just stall the project.
Yeah. Now, what is this, the color of, just the fountain that's coming up that the water's going to come out of? Have they picked a color for downtown at all, or are they just going? Is it, is it going to be black and white? What, what are they doing down there with color?
They have nothing to do with the color down there.
They're not suggesting?
They have in the past, but they gave up that fight once they heard comments from council about the color.
Or the black and white?
Correct. They're not willing to die on that hill. They want to work with you for forward-moving progress for the village.
Okay. Then I like this one. Yeah.
They're willing to spend the money.
They can pick whatever color they want. You know, these colors. These colors are basically pretty much all the same. So whatever they pick.
The colors they picked were darker for aging.
Mm-hmm.
Over time, rust, water.
Yes.
Let them decide.
Yeah.
Yep.
Tell them it's fine.
Well, tonight on, uh, New Year's letter C, you can do it on color, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We need a motion to accept and file downtown development authority.
Oh, I see, I can read it.
Motion to accept and file downtown development authority meeting on Friday, October thirteenth.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Communications, hey, Saginaw County Parks.
Not much going on, hey.
Very forceless, cider and donut hate.
Almost time to close them up.
Yep. I think that's the first thing I've seen out here.
Does anybody want to accept and, make a motion, accept and file that, or are we going to go through?
I'll make the motion. I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? B, U Mitch dot edu, local government policy paper.
Yeah, so, uh, the University of Michigan conducts the setup for local, state, and urban policy called Close Up at U of M Ann Arbor with the partnership with the MML, MTA, and MAC. These are surveys of, uh, this one happens to be, I think eighty-three counties, two hundred and eighty cities, two hundred and fifty-three villages, and twelve, over twelve hundred townships. And this is, they do different topics and subjects. This happens to be on local government funding. And it's just to keep you in the loop. Haven't seen the signed budget, I know they worked till three AM on the second and third to keep government moving at the state level. They signed something yesterday, but no details are out on revenue sharing for local governments. They're looking at a twelve percent cut to constitutional revenue sharing, eight point eight percent cut to statutory sharing, which will affect us. As you hear rumors of groups in the village trying to dissolve, you know, the village for taxes purposes, this is the study that shows just how concerning this is and, you know, twenty-nine percent of local officials believe that Michigan's current system of funding local government will allow them to at least maintain their jurisdiction's current services. Only sixteen percent believe they will be able to improve or expand the services, so. Revenue sharing in the state has been a problem since proposal A nineteen ninety-four, where they really got local governments in favor of schools, low failing schools, to try to make up the gap between the rich and poor, and it really has failed. And it's brought burdensome times to local government, but people don't understand that they, they thought they're helping schools, so. The majority of options is, and people, you can support raising local property tax mileage rates. You can levy a lake, a local sales tax on alcohol, tobacco. Or you can try to get into local hotel and tourism tax, so. Uh, this is just around ten percent of local officials would support local sales or gas taxes. It's a, it's all about taxation and, and what people see and inadequacy of local government, so. Very interesting study, just want to keep you in the loop of what's going on as we hear about these Sunday meetings around the village.
I will say, I mean, I, I did read the whole thing, believe it or not. And I came up with, um, most of the taxpayers or people who know there's a change coming would prefer that we cut services rather than raise taxes.
Yep.
I mean, that's what I got.
Yep, and that, and that, I think that goes in most places.
And it's fine if that's what they want, you know?
And the, the sad part is it's, the burden put, it's an unfunded mandate from the state that you have to quickly adjust, whereas they are, you know, they're cutting this tax but backfilling with raising the marijuana tax, you know? Four hundred and twenty million to backfill, that, uh, the, limiting this tax. They're going to a what? That gas tax is going to go a hundred percent to roads now, I mean, it's just, they, they robbed Peter to pay palm and cut us.
But they have a lot of Peter and Pauls.
And, and we don't have the option, but this is just a study on local government officials, again, not just villages, but cities, townships, and county officials on, on how they think we can survive.
Well, and don't, don't you think the fact that we've never really counted on revenue sharing for major things here, like, and this shouldn't be major things, but like wages and stuff like that. At least, I don't think anybody has used that, so it's all something that you can look at and work with.
Yeah.
We're not dying here.
In the last six years, we've done a nice job
Yes.
of adjusting and staying afloat.
Yep.
So that the ebbs and flows of federal and state government as they shut down, we, we can still do our job effectively.
Yes.
But there, there does come a point after a certain amount of time that, okay, now we need to look at doing this differently, or we're not funding this, or, and, and the, the thing with, with federal and state governments, the first thing they always do, federal government, they cut the military and they close down the parks. Or you see delays in the FAA now, like you can't, like you can't get your plane somewhere for forty minutes, so that's their first way of making you really feel it. The state, kind of same thing, we're going to cut the state police so that the cities don't have any help, and now we're going to start closing the parks, and you already see that, so. I mean, it wouldn't, it's, it's funny how it, it, going back to nineteen fourteen, that's what they've always done, you know, that's something, okay, we're going to. I mean, it wouldn't, it's, it's funny how it, it, going back to nineteen fourteen, that's what they've always done, you know, that's something, okay, we're gonna cut police, then we're gonna close the parks. The park bathrooms are gonna be worse than they ever were, you know, it's, people say, I don't care, and then the moment you need them, or you want to do something, it's like, okay, and that, this has been going on for hundreds of years, so, or a hundred years, I should say. Just interesting.
Yeah, I was interested in, in reading this. Um, I just want to say too, that, um, I'm just speaking of St. Charles when I say this, but a lot of where we're at today has to do with the managers we've had in the past, Chris and you in the present, and I think we've had some good people running our town.
I get a motion to accept and file that?
I'll make a motion to accept and file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Payment claims.
Motion to accept the payment of claims in the amount of three-hundred-and-eight-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll support.
Roll call on that?
Paul Jenderski is absent, Christine Newman?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff is absent, Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Rosser Nesbit?
Yes.
Okay, new business. Hey, park tree tornado cleanup.
We've accomplished a lot through volunteerism, um, to get us back open to the point where in the front side of the park, it didn't look like anything came through. Uh, the backside is still awful. Uh, DPW's done a tremendous job, especially around the pool house lately. Uh, back in the trees, the state-owned land is still terrible and unsafe, and somebody could really get hurt, if not worse. Uh, so, but there's, it's expensive. So, we're trying to figure out the best way to do this, if you went tree by tree, you're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, and I, that's not in the budget, let's just say. So, speaking with, um, Mr. Thurston, Mr. Brown, and reaching out to tree companies, what is the best way that we can get the most bang for our buck? Clean up what we can, and still get rid of those hangers that are gonna hurt somebody, and so, conclusion we came to was, let's just cap it at a daily rate for a week and see what we can get done. So, we received two quotes out of three companies. Thurston's came in at thirty-five-hundred per day, up to five days, and the other company was forty-five-hundred a day with a twenty-thousand-dollar cap. Uh, that said, I think Thurston's has more equipment than the other company. Not only are they less, but they, they can get up to like sixteen-inch logs and, and just grind them up and chip them, and they're gonna leave the chips in the woods. Um, so, let's just see if we can get rid of a lot of that backside by the rink, by the pool house, and into the disc golf course, so we can get the new baskets up and have people still playing there.
Are we responsible for the, the part across the little creek there?
It's state-owned land, but it's a, it's a partnership with them, uh, that we have the disc golf course in there. So, we kind of maintain it, but it was the Michigan Trust Fund that kind of initiated that, and there's a big signage back there that kind of says that. So, it's not, it's not owned by us, but we maintain it.
Okay, so that would be part of the cleanup then?
The, the, uh, very unsafe things. There's, there's, they're not gonna be able to get all their equipment through there, back there, they're gonna have to have some people climbing, and it's gonna be very dangerous for people doing the job.
Is there still some brush back there that the DPW could do?
Once the, once the logs are down. That's the, the problem right now is there's trees hanging up over top. If we bump one of them trees trying to get them logs out of there, I don't want to put the guys over there.
I'm not talking the logs, honey, I'm talking just the smaller brush stuff.
I think that's what cleaned up.
We got all that.
That's all gone.
Behind the ball diamonds, behind the, uh, pool house, and in front of the roller rink is all done.
What about in the woods?
In the woods is where the trees are hanging up, and we don't want to get in there and mess around until they get them knocked down.
I'm just looking at trying to keep the cost down as much as possible.
We, we can get some of the smaller piles, but I want the trees over our heads to be gone first. They're hanging across other trees, and they're about forty feet up, and I don't want them hitting anything and.
Yeah, I know some of them.
They, they're, neither one of these are planning on taking everything away, are they?
They're chipping most of it and grinding it into small pieces of wood chips.
Okay, so then we would then move those later.
If they're huge stacks, yes, if not, we'll just spread them in the, off the trails.
In the, okay. Well, one comes seventeen-five, and one comes to twenty thousand, that's how it looks to me.
Yeah.
I would make a proposal, we go with Thurston.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Paul Jenderski is absent, Christine Newman?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff is absent, Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Rosser Nesbit?
Yes.
Letter B, coal miners bathroom floor.
Well, we've had some complaints about our bathrooms in the last three months, especially from the DDA, uh, so, we've taken aggressive effort to try to clean them and keep them clean, uh, daily checks. Uh, we did have hometown days where over two-hundred people were in the village park, um, using the toilet paper and the paper towel, thus rendering it useless as there was no ta, paper towel or toilet paper, which upset members of the community. Uh, so, we're, we're trying to make it better, we're trying to check on it more often, uh, one of the complaints is that it just smells, it's a bathroom. It has been painted, but the urine is soaked up in the paint. No way better to put that, so, one of the ideas we came up with was to eliminate the paint and then put like a epoxy coat over it that would cover up the smell, uh, make it look nicer, and it start.
Easier to clean.
Easier to clean, where you, you will noticeably see that we've been there and done something. We had a couple proposals, this is the only one where he's willing to donate his time, I believe, is that correct, or?
He's donating all the, all the epoxy and all the clear coat?
All the paint, yeah. So.
It'll, it'll be the same color as that's in Thurston's outdoors, the gray with the red, white, and black speckles. And he has a bunch left over, so he would donate all that, and then they're gonna grind all of the old paint off, epoxy it, and then put a clear coat over. So, he's basically donating all the materials.
So, was it twelve-hundred for the, or did he decide that?
The, the materials.
They gotta, they gotta have a machine to grind all the painting stuff down.
Oh, you said materials, that's.
Yep.
The, the painting, the epoxy and the clear coatings, donating that.
Okay.
Not the.
Which is about five or six hundred dollars, so.
That's awesome, okay.
It's a start, and if we can let it, like, get it done, close them up for the winter by spring when we open it up, it'll have a nice epoxy smell and start fresh.
They'll be like solid.
Better than urine.
Yes.
I was telling Bart too, the one time, couple of times I looked in there, I noticed the one urine, it looks to me like it's either, I thought it looked like it was rusted, but he says it's just discolored.
I don't know if it's rusted, we scrub and scrub and scrub, it don't come off, so I don't know if it is rust or what it is, but.
Those have been there a long time.
They've been there a long time.
Maybe it's time we.
And they sweat, and they freeze, and they.
Yeah. We put those in to stop them from breaking the toilet bowl and smashing them on the floor.
The porcelain ones, yeah.
They're from jails.
Yeah.
The ones in there now, they're supposed to be indestructible.
They're, they are, so having, having ran a county.
They might rust, but they're indestructible.
Having been a county administrator, they are indestructible, but what inmates do is they take the blanket you give them and try to flush them until it floods. And then you have to relocate them for the night, which just creates problems for.
Well, we have somewhere up by the school that does that with mops, so, it's not like it's an unusual thing to do. But maybe it's time to look at replacing those. Has the park committee said anything about that?
Not yet, we're, we're working on, I, I'm bypassing them for the epoxy side.
Can I ask a really strange question, because I, I don't know this? Can you epoxy walls?
I'd imagine so.
See why not?
That's drywall rather than cement, though.
I know, is, is cement in there, is that bad, is, is the peel, is paint peeling off those walls and everything?
No.
No, they're still okay. They just need to be painted.
Yeah, the walls will be pretty good.
I've not been there in a long time, so, yeah. Okay, just a question.
No, well, yeah, it is.
Be nice to have really smooth walls.
We do take scrub rushes to the walls a couple
Okay.
once a week at least.
Okay.
But it doesn't, it's, even when the next morning, you still smell it.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Well, I make a motion, we go with the epoxy floor.
I'll second.
For twelve-hundred dollars.
Roll call.
Paul Jenderski is absent, Christine Newman?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Edgar Tidoff is absent, Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain is absent, Jennifer Rosser Nesbit?
Yes.
Letter C, water fountain color scheme.
Think you guys have discussed this in length? Think we have our answer, no, no action necessary? Full, I'll tell the DDA, you put the full faith and effort into this and believe in them, so. Extend an olive branch.
Letter D, suggest trick-or-treat Halloween hours.
Halloween and trick-or-treating are not a village sanctioned event, but a nationally recognized holiday. Other than announcing suggested times, to keep some sense of order with pedestrian traffic, we have no legal authority or basis to cancel, stop, or change Halloween trick-or-treating. It is an individual parent decision, both those that choose to follow, or allow their kids to play and door-to-door, and those who choose to hand out candy. We suggest typically five-thirty to seven on Halloween. Um, that's what we've done in the last six years, it is. Did I say seven-thirty?
You said seven.
You said seven.
Well, it should be seven, it gets dark, but.
I think seven's fine.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty normally, um, again, it is up to each individual family. It is a national holiday, not a village sanctioned.
That's right.
What time, what time is fireworks gonna be?
Eight, okay, so that gives everybody time to get to where they're going.
Yeah.
So, it's up to you on your suggestion.
I'll make a motion, we do the five-thirty to seven-thirty.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, thanks. So, it's five-thirty until the candy runs out, right? Get enough for three-hundred-and-fifty kids and go for it.
All right. Apartment reports, hey, DPW.
Hello. Water pumpage this mon, last month, was five-million-three-hundred-and-seven, uh, ninety-seven-thousand gallons on water. We installed three new touchpads on houses, fixed a six-inch water main leak on Maple, again, and ordered a disinfectant byproduct kit for our sample to go to Lansing. And the sewer, we pumped three-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand gallons. Uh, had a meeting with Velocity Pump about new sewer pump maintenance. Pulled two sewer pumps that were plugged, Scott mowed the lagoons, meeting with Spicer to check our three sewer stations and our lagoon structures. They came and did some pump tests for us, and to make sure everything's running good, and it seemed to go really well, so. Little pre-m, pre-maintenance. Uh, let's see, structures, I was for a pump test, and on the streets, Tyler and Scott ran the street sweeper, Terry kept the flowers and the trees watered, had the new Good Rich sign put up, Tyler mowed the road sides, we patched streets, kept garbage uptown dumps, and worked on banners. In the park, cleaned up large piles of brush by the roller rink, behind the pool house, and on the backside of the ball diamonds, kept trash and civilians cleaned, cleaned and mopped the bathrooms daily, put wood chips in the two large islands in front of the park, took down damaged baby swing. The baby swing we just replaced somehow got completely ripped. The whole arm coming down is just, I, I don't know how it happened, I, I don't know how it could have happened.
It wasn't storm damage?
No, no, this is.
I thought there was just a hole in the back.
The arm thing comes down and latches, but it was ripped that way, but it wasn't only, I, I don't know, I don't know if it's a swing flaw, I don't know how it happened. I have it out there, if anybody wants to see it, it's weird.
Did the park, did they, are they gonna replace that?
They voted to put the other one away for winter when it comes time and to postpone. It, it's, I can't remember the price, uh, it's in the mix, so.
We know, but didn't, didn't we discuss this before, decided you needed to have those swings over there? We needed to have those things over there to make it a handicapped accessible.
It's fifteen-hundred dollars for a new one, so they're like, let's just hold off, get some trees cleaned up, get the fences fixed, let's get some epoxy, and, and, I mean, it's almost time to winterize anyway.
Left the one that was there, there.
Okay.
Took the other one back to the barn, so nobody could get hurt on it.
I sent the photos, asked, is this covered by warranty, how would this happen, and they had no clue. Uh, the person I normally speak with is on maternity leave for a while, so they gave me a different salesperson, and they're like, they didn't have a clue what was going on, so.
It literally looks like somebody grabbed it and ripped it, it's heavy plastic, so it, it's weird, it wasn't cut, it doesn't look like it was cut, it looks like it doesn't.
Was it hit by a car, or?
No, not that there, no.
A deer got into it? A deer ran into it, got hurt, huh?
But anything, I don't really know. It's just the way that it happened, it's the wrong way, it could have been the other way, it'd have been. Okay. Uh, in the front of the park, took down damaged baby swing, got bids for dangerous tree removal, which we talked, uh, marked all the trees that needed to be taken down, cut up and hauled out. Uh, tree limb that fell and dropped in the park, it was over by the bathrooms, we had another big branch come down, took care of that. Uh, dropped off barricades, an extra trash cans for hometown days, fixed the kayak launch twice, it seems that someone is carrying wrenches. Because twice now, we've had to put on bolts with locking nuts, and we've went back and they're gone again. So, somebody's literally taking a wrench that isn't pulling them off, and when they're pulling themselves up, it's, the rails are coming, almost coming off in their hands. So, we're keeping a closer eye on that, we're checking them out.
I'm sure it's probably there.
A couple times a week, and.
The camera footage is gonna let me know when it's happening.
Yeah, I mean.
If you get, you know, we can look at it and see.
Right.
And go back and look, I just need the date.
And then, uh, kept the grass cut. In the equipment, we got a new front hub assembly for the Kubota tractor, got the heat fixed on the little dump, the AC fixed on the big dump, got our new line striper, fixed the wheels on the zero turn, and Jim Botts broke the wheels down for us, put tubes in them, and he didn't hurt us a thing, he did that. So, I thought that was worth mentioning.
Okay.
Uh, we responded to ten service calls and ten mistakes.
The street sweeper will go until November?
Until it gets to where we're putting ice on the road. We're gonna, we're gonna run until we're making ice. It's, it's different than when we were here, because when we were here, we had to winterize it and put it out
Okay.
in a cold area.
And it's in a warm area all the time.
Our barn's heated now, so we can, we don't have to winterize it.
Aren't you happy with the heated barn?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely, well, this one was heated, but we had to get rid of it to keep all our other stuff inside.
Well, I had to make room.
We had to make room, right. So, that's, that, now it doesn't matter, until snow flies, we can run it, because we don't have to winterize it. And that's the plan.
So, as people throw the leaves out in the street, we can throw them right back up in their yard?
Working on it.
Okay.
We get as many, we pick up what we can, but we blow off what we have to.
It's not meant to be picked up, yeah.
They don't really work that way, but we try. And if that all fails, we got the little broom and the little, uh, little tractor, and we just broom it into the bucket, get rid of it that way. We've done that the last two years, we've had to, because when it starts raining, it clogs the drains up, so, if it gets too bad, we just do it that way, too.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. B, police.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we had a total of seven arrests this past month. Quite a few warrant pickups, we're trying to clean some of the old ones, I found a pile of old warrants on a clipboard, and I went through and found the ones that were still active, so we're trying to clean those up. There's actually one that was from two thousand twenty-two that still had to be sworn out, so. Just take care of some old stuff that we found and cleaning them up. A total of ninety-one reports this, this month, which is up a little bit from last month, it's quite high for a village our size, but a lot of it is assisting inspections, purchase permits and stuff like that, so it's not technically, when you look at a bigger number, that, oh, my crime is on the rise, it's, it's really not on the rise, it's just, we're doing other stuff on top of what we're normally doing, assisting other people like that, because we have, we have the people to do so now.
It also seems to be quite repetitive.
What's that?
Like, the same thing at the same place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have our trouble.
Which makes it look long, but it's the same address, so.
Well, yeah, the one was, the one for one thirty-three North Agana was, there's four times on there because there's four charges for one person, but it shows up, even though it's one report for us, it shows up four times on there because it's four separate charges.
Okay.
So, um, so yeah, the larceny was, um. The, both, the first two were school-related, um, they just happened to be back at home. Um, small stuff, um, the flea elude, you see, Brady and Franchi, I'm sure people have seen the video online. On social media of our police car in a pursuit with a mini bike, uh, high speed thirty mile an hour pursuit. So what happened with that is, is, uh, the Chesney unit called, he was in pursuit of two mini bikes, they were failing to stop. So he was the closest to assist, went out there to assist him. Uh, by the time he gets out there, he had one that had stopped, the other one did not, it took off, so as, um, Officer Hall was sitting there with Officer Root from Chesney. While they were doing their, the paperwork on that guy, they could hear the other mini bike off in the distance, because they're really loud. And so Officer Hall would go look for him and ended up finding him, activated his lights, the guy didn't stop. He looked back at the camera twice, he had a clear view of his face, so he went, then went into the, the mobile home there in Che- in Chesney on a side street. So he dipped between a tree and a, and a pole, and he couldn't follow him with the car, so. He went back in the mobile home, he must have took him back in house, but like I said, they went back and watched the footage, positively identified, got a warrant, I actually swore the warrant on, sitting there waiting for it to go pick him up tomorrow. Uh, but that's, you know, I did, I did hear some questions about that, but that's why he was out there, that's why he was pursuing somebody outside the village so much he was assisting. Assisting at Chesney, which is, you know, what you do is mutual aid, so, um, is there any questions about any of the calls? Total activities was three hundred and sixty, uh, hundred and sixty-nine self-initiated property checks, uh, is the vast majority of those. And we had sixty traffic stops with eighteen citations.
Letter C, building inspector code enforcement.
Hi, Scott.
Hi, Scott.
All right, for the month of September, we had eight permits issued, there were two zoning, two building, two mechanical, one plumbing and one electrical. And we were dealing with eleven complaints, I believe you have that report, if you have any questions about those complaints.
Just the six thirty-two Flint streak. What's, what's going on with that?
Well, we still have a dispute between the, um, property owner and the neighbor, and that's why it's held up.
That's why the cleanup hasn't been done, okay.
It's my understanding that the neighbor tore down fence posts that the property owner had put up, I don't know why he wasn't charged. With malicious destruction of private property, because neither one of them have proof of who actually owned those posts. Um, and to actually remove them, they should have had proof that they own that property before they did it. So, um, we're kind of at a standstill until that gets, gets resolved.
I'm really trying to stay out of it, I really am, because it is a relative involved in this. But I'm looking at the, the mess at that house, that's what I, you know, it's.
He's made the attempt, he has the materials there to fix it. Um, and the neighbor put a stop to it, from what I understand, it's the neighbor that's doing most of the complaining that stopped the repairs, so. What do we do at this point?
We gave them each the, the, uh, survey from Spicer Engineering.
Which, I got a phone call about that, she said that the property that you had for her was the wrong one.
Okay, uh, still, it's a survey, it's a civil infraction amongst neighbors, that is not a village issue. If you want a survey done to find your lot, lot line, just as the township has to do it between the apartments, that it, we're not paying for surveys. That's not our role.
That's what it comes down to, the property, I just feel we don't get involved in that, they have, somebody has to pay for a survey or they have to agree to pay for one themselves. Or figure out a, a indivi- in, in between, you know, you, you know, I think it's this, I think it's that, okay, well, let's just put the fence here, what, whatever. But they have to come to agreement.
But most of the times when you, when you're both so passionate about it, you will agree to split the cost of a survey. Save, you know, that way, okay, I'm only getting this for half, and okay, and then we'll have a definitive answer, is what normally happens.
I don't see that happening.
No, no, it's not gonna happen. You'll notice a lot of those are due for recheck coming up this month, we have already been done today, one of those was resolved. Uh, one of them will be forwarded to our attorney for a civil infraction ticket. And yet another will be getting the final notice, but there are several more that'll be coming up later in the month. Um, the health of the owner, uh, Main Street number one on that list, um. I haven't heard of any improvements yet, so. He's not physically able, neither one of the residents to take care of the issue that's there, so.
And and at one time, not that long ago, I, I asked the person hypothetically, what is your plan, should something happen to you? After they mentioned, uh, health. I don't have one. It'll be up to my kids, which.
Well, they have a few, so somebody might stop.
Yep, yep, so, uh, my inclination is it'll end up that way. And it'll be, it'll finally be resolved for good, but not in the way you hope.
I see three twenty-seven has really cleaned up their place, it looks nice.
They have, they're constantly working on it.
Got a little bit more to do.
It's slow, but they are making progress.
Looks way better.
Second round of public comment.
Mine's not, it is to do with apartment, it's not, I'm just curious if you guys know or have a date when you're gonna clean up the trees behind the apartment that are down?
Uh, in the park side?
On the park side, yeah, it, one of the park side trees, it was kind of a massive one, it's the one that hit our building. Um, and then also on the backside of the park, the frisbee golf course, it took out two of my fence panels, I'm not even worried about it.
That's what we were talking about earlier.
So I will let Travis know that it was approved tonight and then as soon as he has the time. So it could be this week, probably likely next week, I'm guessing they have jobs, so hopefully next week.
And then if it comes down to it and they need to get in from that one, I, I'm willing to let them go through my backyard where the frisbee golf course is. Cause we have that opening, I don't know what hole that is there, um, if that's the only way, because I don't know if they can get through the whole park.
I will let him know, I appreciate that, thank you Penny.
Anyone else?
Motion to close the open meeting.
Support.
All the favor? All opposed? Okay, meeting closed.